Call the Dixon County Commission to order, please stand for the flag salute.
Flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did have some additions to our agenda. The first addition would be to consider steel bids for a structure at 1598 2150 Avenue. Also, we've had a request from the Sheriff's Department on a capital investment. And did you say that Doug was gonna want it exactly this session or not?
Uh, I don't know that he will. I haven't heard from Doug. I'm assuming he is coming, so.
Different Doug.
A different Doug. I'm sorry.
So we go ahead and get Doug, get here when he do.
My scheduling, you can always take that off.
Yeah, okay. So with those three additions, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Been moved to second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, must be carried. The consent agenda, we're the minutes of the November 7th work session and regular meeting. And that was all that we have in the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the consent agendas presented.
Second. Been moved to second, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, must be carried. Commissioners comments? Lynn, did you have anything this week?
Oh, no, not really. Just the regular meetings we're at.
Well, Craig, North Central Regional Planning Commission, we had goal setting. I went last, gave Doug his margin orders for what the agenda should be for the next year. It sounded pretty lofty.
Five years, really?
Yeah, five years, yeah. Five-year program. Attended that last Thursday. Laverne and I went on the, with the Soil Conservation Service, their awards for the banquet they have coming up. Really, I.
I was enjoying it.
Yeah, I did too. I mean, we got to see the county roads, township roads.
Yeah.
Got a lot of comments on, you know, the road work we done. Seen a lot of the work, well, we seen, well, we like all those places. And there's a lot of good things happening in Dixon County with the Soil Conservation Service. I'm hopefully keeping viable. Like I said, we went from Manchester to, well, the inside of Hope. So I think we put 140 mile on a vehicle.
I think it was. And there was, a lot of those were back roads that I'd never been on, so.
Yeah, took them down some roads in Noble Township.
Yeah, Craig, I was a little concerned about some of those drop-offs that we. I didn't realize that.
Northeast Dixon County had those kind of roads.
Yeah.
But yeah, really went well. I'd like to thank Gerald Rooney, he bought our lunch at the Hope.
Yes.
That's damn really good lunch, so. Yeah, really excellent day. Did get an email from Lauren Barton on the mortgage registration fee stuff. He's a banker for Central National Bank.
Yes, was this?
Yes.
This was the notice?
Yeah.
And I guess that is stating why they're. Yeah.
Well, a favorite.
A favorite.
Yeah, yeah. But the farm credit system has not very advantage. I did, I looked at it real quickly and that's all I had, Laverne.
Yes, let's see, I, the Conservation Service, they did have two names up for every award. So we went and viewed the practices of the conservation that they had done on their farm. And then the Conservation Board was gonna vote on who the winner was gonna be. And so that they would be presented the winners at their conservation banquet. Like I said, it's, but it, we did get, I guess from Craig and my staff. We did get over 130-some miles that, and some of them were back roads that you just normally wouldn't be driving on normally. And so it was interesting to see the, all the different areas in Dixon County. We do have some visitors in the back row with us. Would you mind standing and stating your name and?
Go ahead.
Shaylyn Burt, and we're here for our government class, it's a project through DCL.
And Lorraine, it's on the same reason.
We're having introductions here.
You walked in just in time.
Just state, just state your name and.
Okay, Samantha, I'm here for DCL.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have you signed in up here? We gotta do, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Presentations, petitions, proclamations, and other public comments. We had that scheduled for 11:15, so Brad, we might have you fill in till then.
Okay. Well, we have through a couple items on my list here. First of all, I had sent you, I guess, some comments that were in the media last week. I had received a couple calls and a couple visits regarding the I-70 closure, which has kind of been a contentious issue as we know. And it was purported, I think, in one of the local media outlets that this was a surprise to us, which I can't speak for the city, but for the county, it wasn't a surprise to us. And as you recall, we had brought this to you and the city's attention several weeks in advance. And Representative Barker had actually stopped in here because of that at one point. And I think we had, we being the county, arranged a meeting the following Friday when Representative Barker had stopped by with all the parties involved to try and figure out a resolution, knowing that that was gonna cause a real significant impact on the retail industry and within the Adlin. So I just wanted to mention that. Representative Barker had stopped in to see me Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Monday being the holiday, when that came out and wanted to make sure that his recollection was the same as ours. And as you remember, when he left, he offered if we needed to go to Topeka and talk to the Secretary of Transportation, he'd certainly make that happen. And unfortunately, and it's no control, no fault of the cities, no fault of the counties, but the project's taken longer than what was anticipated. Fortunately, he spent an offer ramp open last night. And it's my understanding from KDOT that the on-ramp should be open the first of the week on that project. And hopefully, we can work with KDOT, with the city and us. And when they get to the westbound side after the first few years, things should be done a little bit differently. So, because it did have a significant impact. The point I wanted to make is we've known for a long time that that was gonna be an issue. We brought that up and tried to do what we could, even though may or may not be, we may or may not have a dog in the hunt, or at least a primary dog in the hunt. We knew it was gonna be a significant impact in the retail industry. And their sales taxes are sales tax, and we're all in that thing together. So just wanted to kind of mention that and let you know that Representative Barker had stopped by earlier this week and was concerned about it, so. Also, he is, he is gonna stop by next week, I believe. I'm sorry, December 12th, not next week, at Times Line, and see you in the work session. Also, put a fever out to Senator Orpkey, and haven't heard back from him yet. But hopefully, we'll be able to get them both in here. And obviously, we have several issues that have been brought up today during our department head meeting that I'm sure that you, you want to talk to them about, so. Our managers' evaluations are occurring this month. Of all employees, as you know, we'll be doing employee evaluations throughout the month of November. And the finishing of those up first part of December. Everybody enjoys those tremendously. We do have a meeting tomorrow here in the basement with all the townships and the county, and KDEM, and FEMA regarding the flooding, the disaster declaration for the flooding that occurred earlier this year. Hopefully, this will be the final meeting we have with them. But since it's been presidentially declared at this point, FEMA comes in now and looks at all the records. I'd like to think that we've done this enough, unfortunately, but fortunately, that we know what we're doing and all of our ducks will be on the road and it'll go very smoothly, so. And as regarding the one item that you added to the agenda for the steel bids on 2150 Avenue, that particular structure is one that was damaged during the flooding. And what I'll be asking you for when we get to that point in the meeting is permission to authorize those bids. That purchase, hopefully, will be covered under our FEMA damages, so, when we get to that point, so. Let's see, we discussed briefly the Safety Edge project from Solomon to Chapman on Old Forty. That is scheduled to be bid and let on the 18th of December, with the project starting, construction actually starting early next spring. The project is in two phases, you know. We were awarded the west half of the county first, and then the east half. And that'll be a 35 working day and a 65 working day project respectively, so. We're looking forward to getting that done. A question was brought up earlier in the meeting about the colds and things that are narrow. We don't have a lot of them, but we do have some of them. And some of the ones between Chapman and Solomon, or Annapolis that we had done recently, has certainly helped that issue because they are wider.
Yeah.
Won't be an issue. We still have some, one being the one with just East and Solomon. It's an issue and always will be until we can replace it, so. But at this point, we're looking forward to having that done. The projections are a little higher than what we had originally thought. However, we don't know when the bids are gonna come in. And recently, KDOT says the bids have been coming in a little bit higher than what they were, so. It just kind of remains to be seen. But those are still roughly a 90-10 share, 90% federal funds, 10% local funds, so. We'll know more. And I have the paperwork that I'll sign and authorize KDOT to proceed with the bidding to get that going, so I'll stop at that point since it's 11:15 finished there.
All right. Yes, we, we do have Doug McKinney and hear from the regional planning, North Central Regional Planning and discuss the whole project.
Navarre.
I mean, no, Navarre, excuse me, Navarre Project.
And Gary Anderson from Navarre, I guess Ryan's been saying, so, but in the front row. More of an update from my perspective. And maybe some contemplations for you, because as you might recall, you're a governing body per se, so. I'm gonna go ahead and give this publicly to Janelle, so. That's some of the documentation that's far on matters. Except in the front cover, I do have things for people. And I'd send Brad some information with previously, well, in preparation for today, so. This again is the old kind of updated scribbled schedule where things are at. Well, sort of the objective. Most recently, I guess, since commissioners were there in Navarre, documentation was provided. Documentation was provided from Commerce. And don't look at this right away, but this is what Brad and company. Oh, back there at late September. And that documentation satisfied Commerce. You remember, they were there, Navarre, on September 19th, had the gathering, had the volunteers, had a lot of dialogue, and the two Commerce representatives said, send us an updated volunteer commitment list. And so it was updated with electricians, with plumbers, with Monty that can do lots of concrete work and other kinds of things, demolition kind of things, as well as all the others that can do painting and some general, and 4-Hers, et cetera. And so they agreed that there's enough will, energy, enthusiasm, wherewithal in the community to make things happen. So the next phase, per the chart you see, was to go ahead and do procurement of an architect. And so that was done throughout October. The committee met November 1st and then the 5th. And they essentially, through that rating process you see, they blessed, I'm hearing Gary, they blessed BG Consultants and Dan Hall's, that primary person from BG, to be the project architect.
Manhattan.
Uh huh, Manhattan-based, with the other three that showed interest close, but not quite there, so. But that's, from my perspective, that's always pending, negotiation of an agreement. Well, Dan's kind of jumped all over it. He's been there, he's been invited to come back. And so he's met with the committee on November 5th. And then, I guess, a couple of folks just yesterday, Gary's one of the spark plugs. And so they're kind of getting right going with some of the preliminary work they have to do. Well, one of those first items, that's where we get involved with the Garry's and the Ryan's and such, is that agreement on behalf of the project with the architect to do this preliminary work, come up with what I call a game plan, and to show how feasible it is to modify this building for a community center part of it. And so that's that agreement that you have. I don't know if Brad had any thoughts on it from his perspective, but. Anyway, it would be skin in the game for the Navarre community to pay this, say, March of next year, thereabouts, when it's probably going to be wrapped up. It could be done in January, but the cost for that, unless the commissioners have other thoughts, would be their skin in the game or their early match.
Commitment, yeah. What did, we ever come up with an exact figure what that was gonna be, Doug?
Well, I mean, as far as the architecture.
Right.
This preliminary work is $5,000 is what he has.
Not to exceed, or that'd be the?
That's a not to exceed fee, yeah. I think it's page two.
Yeah, yeah, I see it, it's highlighted.
Yeah. $5,000, that's where he's at, or that's where the firm's at. A lot of times, during the past years, it's been three and a half or four thousand, that's been common. But from their perspective, they're doing a little bit more legwork because it's not a new construction, like, say, Woodbine Facilities or Enterprise. Enterprise, there was some demolition, but it was a metal shed, and that wasn't much, so. And actually, in Enterprise's case, the art, it's really not a good comparison because the architect was only paid half because that firm had quit. Or Enterprise quit then, as far as fired them. But in the Woodbine case, it was all new construction. So it's a little easier for architects to deal with that compared to modifying existing. So their price is a little higher in this case.
I thought I remember $5,000, we were down to September, but that was.
And it has been. I checked with Commerce, so.
Reasonable.
I checked with them Monday, but Tuesday, they responded back, said, yeah, we've seen some $4,000 to $5,000 cost for architects, their fees have just gone up, it seems like, for doing a lot of this preliminary work. On the good side, though, they'll come up, if it's blessed, they'll come up with four or five schematics, say, north-south, east-west profiles, layouts, partially what they were doing homework with Gary on. And they'll have some rearrangements of space listed in there. And they'll also have costs for doing each of those sections. So, and with labor and equipment sort of fashioned in. So it's nice and detailed on how many person hours or man-hours it takes to take this wall down, to encapsulate this floor, to change the electrical and ceiling, things like that.
Does the Navarre community, they've just, have you met with them enough that you know kind of what you want generally the building to look like?
Yeah. We've got a, we went over and made our own schematic to start with.
Right.
Of the floor plan, and they just went over and remeasured everything. They couldn't take our word for it.
Right.
Because they had to be sure it's 22 feet, 3 inches, whatever.
Yeah.
But we made it all, and everybody said, yeah, we want to put this here, that there, do away with this. I'm impressed with the meeting on the 5th. It was a very comprehensive group that met with the architect that night. Now, they don't want to meet with nine or 10 people every time, but.
Right.
Three or four is good, but that group, you had 4-H folk, you had, well.
Stakeholders.
Quilting group, yeah, all kinds of stakeholders. And as of yesterday, when they came here to remeasure a thing, there were just two of us there. And I was explaining things that night. It was a little hard to explain when you had that many people.
Right.
So we actually went over and showed, I said, well, see those windows over there? Those are the ones we want to do away. They have no use to us at all. He said, well, I agree with it, you know. And we, we looked at several different things.
Then the buildings of the south is being tore down, is that correct?
The wood structure on the side, it's, we're just gonna take them off. It was an old-school structure they brought in there in '51.
Right.
And it just needs to be taken away.
And then the rest of the building, are you gonna try to do something with the entire rest?
Are we gonna what?
The rest of the school building then will be the?
The main part of the building, it's there now, will stay.
Stay.
And it's just gonna be. But I'm telling the idea for a kitchen in the middle. Yeah, it was one classroom next door where Ryan's room is, and really had no use. And everybody's talking about putting this kitchen on there. So I came up with the idea about putting the kitchen right there, cut some holes in the wall so they can serve food from one side to the gymnasium side, or whatever. We have pancake feeds or whatever they want to do, or rent it out to different events. And somebody wanted to rent that room there, they could have it. If they want the room with the kitchen, they can have it. They want the gymnasium, they can have it.
Kitchen was there, wasn't really usable.
No. Yeah.
No, I didn't.
This'll be much more easily heated and cooled. One kitchen to worry about, instead of having a kitchen down there and a kitchen here, two places to heat. They just can't afford it. And those big monsters in the basement. Yeah. Won't be dealt with. No, they're just gonna be scrapped out and hauled out.
Yeah, we didn't go to the basement, that's.
They're just old, historic, big chunks, ton of metal kind of thing. Could be recycled. I'm sure it will be.
But it takes, cost more to get them out, though.
Well, we're hoping to find somebody that wants scrap to, chop it up and haul it out. The building must have been built around that one on the, the wood side. It's big, it's a giant. And that'll be an environmental savings, non-concern too, by leaving those things idle. Because that sort of stuff, installations were all done differently back in the days. And as we were talking about some of the different materials that we could use, you know, because we thought about doing this, and architects suggested this, which would be a better idea. And they'll have alternatives as well with their cost estimates. We just never gave that a thought.
Yeah.
How to do it.
The restroom situation, what are you gonna do about the restrooms?
I'm sorry?
The restrooms.
Yes, we're gonna tear out the restrooms. The boys' side will be gone completely. That's made part of the other side. And the other side with the girls were there, and it was kind of a strange layout. So we was gonna take part of the other room and make restrooms right there for, that two restrooms, right there.
Yeah. Yeah, that.
And be handicap accessible, and we're gonna have a ramp inside the building where it gets down to that gymnasium, which just drops down.
That's cut back into the board.
We gotta have that for, we got some other people that just can't do the steps. And he got that all figured out.
Well, it looks like you're coming up with a.
And I guess by the 21st, I guess we got another meeting. He's supposed to have this layout all drawed up for us, ready to go, so he can show us. But it was, it was good for us to be there, just the two of us that was really gonna be doing the major bulk of the work, to be able to show you, because, you know, we just talked about these things, you know, and here in this room, you know, oh, that room clear over there, you know, not that familiar with it. So actually going over here and looking at it, you gotta understand why we were talking about what we were doing.
Now, the new part of the school, like, yes, I mean, I know this is a little advanced. Are you gonna try to abandon part of it, or the whole building gonna be?
Well, just the, that wood structure on the side.
Right, but I mean, are you gonna do improvements down, where the classrooms, where the?
Yes, yes.
I didn't know.
We're gonna pull the ceilings out of those buildings.
All the whole building here?
And we're gonna insulate it.
Okay.
We're gonna put some stud walls inside and insulate.
We were down there that night, was a little discussion, you might just kind of, you know, only do a couple of rooms.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna do the whole thing. And of course, architect could scale that back, because what his job is to try to figure out, we only have so many dollars available and so much labor and equipment that you count match-wise. So if it ends up being $303,000 of block grant money cost, well, he's gonna have to take something out and scale it back a little bit, so. And we're trying to do this thing in the easiest way possible without getting into major, major work.
Yeah.
Because I think by, this way.
Bathroom and kitchen are major work.
Yeah, and there's gonna be rooms available for, you know, even if somebody wanted to use it for weddings, whatever, we're gonna have available, and we're gonna have to be able to push that idea. And they haven't proposed much, say, for the stage area, because that's not heavily used. And that might not be a high priority, might be third or fourth down. Other than just a facelift on the, the looks of it.
Yeah.
Same thing for those cold air returns, they're just nice and ornamental right now, so. A lot of things like that. And insulating over top, that schoolhouse not insulated at one aisle. Yeah, the ceiling especially.
That's, like I say, you have to make it energy efficient if you want to keep the cost down, as far as.
And the way that gymnasium, when I'm, I've been up there on top of that thing, it's built like Fort Knox up there. I mean, it's got, it's got steel trusses up there. And everything hung off of steel trusses, I mean, it's humongous up there. So once we can insulate that, you know, that'll shut down the fuel costs a bunch.
Yeah, yeah.
So the architect, he, he also has a, I guess, motivation to keep this thing affordable and feasible, because he only does this preliminary job if he doesn't figure some alternatives out. Because what Commerce will require is that 40% match level from labor and equipment coming in and to help with the, well, what's available through the block grant program. And if it looks great, well, we will come back and share how cost estimate's looking and all those, because the commissioners will have to bless that process. Then we send it off to Commerce, and it's somewhat in keeping with your, your, well, it's not really Gantt chart, but the schedule layout. Then we'll get the blessing from Commerce to do the final application, say, late winter. Or, now, it'll probably be late winter, and we'll send that off to Topeka for the governor's office blessing, per se.
Other words, B&amp;G will have to, the B&amp;G consultant rate, they'll have, that'll all be sent in there to the Department of Commerce?
Yeah, yeah, what they come up with, with alternatives, with the schematics.
And what?
And cost savings, per se, by doing this, this, and this, using volunteer labor and equipment. If it looks like it's in keeping with program requirements or just efficiencies, we'll come back to you so that you can see it and comment on it. And those comments, if they're blessed, will go on, or positive, they'll go on to Commerce. And Commerce will generally automatically bless it. Because if the local unit of government says, yep, that's okay, then Commerce will.
Now, this $5,000, I mean, I knew it was $5,000 in front just for the design, will be an additional cost?
Yeah, they'll be, coming out of the program funds, there'll be additional final design and procurement kind of, I call it, formal design fees.
Any, I, I mean, in the past, what kind of a rate comes out of that? I mean, like 10% of the total, or?
It shouldn't be, say, if we're talking $220,000 for a construction kind of things. It should be probably close to 10% of that, but it could be 8% or 9%.
Yeah.
They, they don't have to do as much onsite inspection, because there's a state inspector that does that. And we will help with procurement side of things, so they don't have to do as much of that. A lot of their responsibilities now, if they're continued to be engaged with the process this fall, that's where their responsibility is to get something back that's positive and it shows a lot of details and what can be saved by doing this with volunteer labor and equipment.
Now, that's the next question now. Since I'm on the North Central Regional Planning Commission board, what do, what does the North Central Regional Planning Commission, what's their percent of this?
Oh, we're limited to 5% on the administration side. So if it's, again, $200,000, it's probably gonna be in that $10,000 to $15,000. I'm guessing more $15-ish, $16,000 aside for the fees for service on the other.
I hadn't asked that question one of the meetings, not in a random opportunity, either.
Administrative, I guess, environmental.
Well, yeah.
There's gonna be some paperwork to keep track of. Don Wilson's engaged there with that process. She is the other spark plug with Ryan and Gary and Dan, I believe, is the.
Who all comes up for environmental evaluation?
Well, the local one we involve is Randy Barton.
Right, but I mean, the state has to come out.
So nobody else has to come out and visit, yeah.
What about asbestos or anything like that at the time?
Well, we hope we're not going to impact any, but we have, we'll have to do an inspection on those that we remove, such as those, that south building. Yeah, most of the stuff, like on the floor, we're talking, it's encapsulated. That's what he's mentioned to do, and he says it's the easiest.
Well, if you're not taking anything out of the basement at all, and that's, you're just leaving it there, you don't have to do it.
Once we tear off those buildings.
Once we tear off those buildings in there, we're knocking foundations in, it's gonna be filled.
Yeah, well, I imagine that wooden building probably didn't have any.
Well, that's the hope, because that's our anticipation.
It's a small basement.
Okay, is there a basement?
The one, the one we're worrying about, have to worry about.
Underneath the?
It's not, it's, the bill, it's only half the size of the building.
Okay.
And the little kitchen on the east, well, it's the mastic underneath, I call it linoleum, but whatever the vinyl floor is made of. We won't plan to pulverize it though. And I say we, the project doesn't plan to pulverize it. It's just to carefully take it out, a square shovel. Right, Gary? Go slow.
There's not that much, not that big area.
Yeah, and we were, we, as we inspected the building, uh, yesterday, uh, looking inside, there was a crawl space up inside the, or an access hole. We wanted to get up there and see how that was attached to the building, so we, we had a little bit more idea about how it's coming off. Cause I guess we don't want to destroy. In part. I don't know how they bolt it, we don't know how they, and a guy that is still alive that put it in there, he's got, he, he don't even remember anymore, you know.
The roof is in good shape, and so is the foundation. Those are two biggies. The masonry's good. So there's lots of positives, just a lot of other interior kind of things.
Basement on the other side there, where that big boiler is, there, the basement's in good shape. And we was talking about a place for, uh, people to go, whatever, a safe room. Well, we was gonna, we talked about building one, and I thought, well, we got this great basement down, and all we gotta do is just, you know, accent it with a light for, you know, for emergency. It could be used for that same situation, and that takes care of that problem. There are a few people out there that don't have any basements or any shelter at all.
That's another asset to the community then.
Yeah.
Yeah. It kind of reminds me over in Saline County with a couple of Cansted projects there. And Sundowner might be familiar to you as far as the name, but Sundowner West is over by Headville or Rolling Hills. And there's a lot of mobile homes and RVs that visit that. Well, they had no storm shelter. So part of that, the state's desire for that facility, which is a large fire station, a real fire district station. But they said, put a community room that can be a safe room in it. And in those days, they waived that three hundred thousand maximum for certain projects then. So they allowed them to have about twenty or thirty thousand extra, just to do that. So that was nice, and it's been used, say, two or three times. So it sits right on the edge of that Sundowner West mobile home and RV park. And it's, well, I guess, probably saved a life or two out there. A lot of wind in that thunder.
Yeah, well, this plan sounds a lot better to me than the original plan. Cause that older building, like I say, there was gonna be a lot of restoration on that then.
Has a nice wood floor, but that's probably about it.
And we're gonna try to, um, solve as much as out as we can to knock this probably.
But, and I don't anticipate any concern on the asbestos. We would probably not volunteer, but partially donate. Our organization services would be the asbestos inspectors, cause we have somebody over in Salina that could do that. But that's another one of those skin in the game kinda things that has to be done, because it is a non-residential structure. And by state statutes, one of those legislative mandate things, back in the nineties even, that those have to be verified just to make sure there's no environmental concerns.
All right.
So you have before you, I guess I, Gary, you might say versus me, but that's the recommendation to go with BG Architects.
I'll go ahead and offer the motion that we enter this agreement with BG Architects.
Second?
Just been moved and seconded. Paul, there, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.
Now, if you allow me, another thought on that is when BG's done, they'll provide the invoice. They'll likely send it to, say, Ryan as the chief spark plug, Ryan Riffle.
That's good.
I didn't know, well, yeah, that's probably good. It's always good to have that after the mission. And that was probably expected on your part. But what we would normally do is to show proof of their check, say, copy it, document it, that sort of thing, this direction. So that Janelle is the keeper of the book at this point in time, the file book, and so we would give that to her. But anything else that's going to happen, that they're going to have to, oh, document at this point in time, we'll just keep pushing that paper this direction, but try to stay in communication. But if, if BG can get some things done before the end of the year, then we'll come back and share those thoughts too, so. Keep communicating.
And I guess I made the assumption that the bar community has the five thousand.
I know the Lions Club, but Ryan said there were a couple of donors, is what he told me.
Well, Co-op said they would be giving us something to help us. And, uh.
That's where Don Wilson was, one of the other spark plugs.
You need all three of these signed in?
Well, we want to send one to Dan Hall. I wanna leave one with the county, Janelle slash, uh, and I wanna take one.
Do I, do I just need this signed?
Well, I have four of them, because, uh, I wanna send one back with Gary, so. I made plenty of copies.
And just write onto the Dixie County of the line.
But we'll give one to Gary, he can take back for Don, who's the keeper of the paper. I think Dan must've signed four or five, Dan Hall, so.
Did you have a copy, Craig?
I, I gave it to Laverne.
You already did?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's good to see the Navarre community involved in this in such a way. It's good to see the community Navarre.
Yeah, I think people realize this, this, this is a big task.
It's a real opportunity too.
But, uh, there are a few of us in there that are really involved, and keep a lot of people involved. I mean, you know, we're, you know, that's a farming community, and it's gonna be tough. Not to say it's gonna be as, it's cake, if not, it's gonna be a lot of work.
Certain times of the year, it can be challenging.
It's hard to be able to juggle everything, you know, everybody's out cutting their wheat and stuff, you know, it's more work right now.
Yeah, well, it's nice that it's in a closed building, so you can, don't worry about the weather.
We don't wanna see a situation like Woodbine's got with that old schoolhouse sitting there, and that's what could happen. And we're not gonna let that happen.
Manchester's gypsum, gypsum, probably the, the worst one in this thirty mile area.
And there's not a lot happening in Navarre. We need anything we can get to help it.
Well, and likewise, Enterprise is just about ready to get going. I know winter's coming, but they're soliciting bids for their water Cansted project. If they have nice weather, they'll be doing some activity this winter. They've been chomping at the bit for a while, the volunteers per se. And city folks. Now, what Gary didn't bring up, and I'm just being kind of nosy and curious here. While the architect's working on some of these ideas, he knows that Monty is willing to run a jackhammer, and Gary's willing to do this, and fourteen others are gonna do that. Is there anything that the county commissioners, or Brad, or Janelle, or others can think of that the county might be able to do? And just to give you history, in Enterprise's fire station library project, the county brought a, a truck over, and Woodbine too, and helped haul some debris away, bricks, for example, or, or things like that, foundation materials.
Or a load of gravel.
So we're not necessarily, I'm not asking, but I'm just kind of throwing that out there as ideas, cause the architect's gonna need to kind of anticipate that. And.
I think Martin, as long as Martin's receptive and has the time.
Yeah, I just have to let us know what we can help with, and someone gave out, you know, with what you've got, and we have personnel.
I guess we don't need electricians still, we have plenty of volunteers there, so the county electrician does need to be engaged. And there's plenty of painters, so we don't need a county painter. But there could be some debris, uh, mobile concrete blocks that need hauled away, a dump truck kind of thing, usage. That's the, the one I think, there might be something else Gary thinks, uh, down the roads.
Yeah, I, I guess, if you could just let us know enough in advance so that Martin can schedule it. Because that, if they're on a bridge, bridge project or something, you know, it, sometimes they can't just pull them off of it. But like I say, as long as we get scheduled enough in advance, I.
He'll think of something.
We can easily help out.
Right, it's like, you know, tearing down the, the old school there, debris removal, that, or, you know, when you get it.
Yeah, there'll be something.
Well, we're glad that you are making progress on this, and like I say, we, say, it, when it's done, everybody will be proud of it.
I think we'll be.
And something that will be usable.
Back and forth through a new building, old pick old building, turn down the old building. And I wouldn't against to have another new structure put up, but I just know my capabilities, and what's going on in my life that I can handle either one. I just can't handle both. It's too much. And since we have a good structure, good foundation, a good roof. Just getting the insides fixed up and rewired, up to code, I think we're gonna have something. There's a lot of people that might give us, you know, to help us, and, and financially, would be some of the old people in the school there. It means something to them to be able to say, hey, that's.
Well, and it does. I, I've been at, uh, a, a building that they was having reunions at. It was on my wife's side, and I didn't really think much of the building, you know, but all at once came in and revitalized this building. And I mean, it, it really is nice. I, I mean, it had some hardwood floors in that they refinished, and I said, gee. And like I say, you don't get that kinda thing in a new building. But they put in new bathrooms, new kitchen, and, and put, kind of, like you say, just did the updates that they needed to do. And I was quite impressed with that building when it got done.
Well, as time's gone on, I didn't realize what it meant to live out where we live, and it's kind of remote in a way. But as time's going on, and things I've learned, and be able to help farmers farm, and, and do the things that I do, and the quietness of it. There's a lot to be said about small places like this. I mean, you know, it's nice to have your neighbor next door, but it's really nice not to have any neighbors for a little ways away. And I really do appreciate that. And I think that, and it's good for myself, because I think it keeps me straight in my head. You know, without having so much pressure on me in the world.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I'd say we will.
So far so good.
Good luck.
I guess, we see you tonight, Doug.
Yep, that'll be another item on the business. And I know we're gonna be presenting, Dev Oldie and I, but interact, that's what we'll mention. There's gonna be about nineteen or twenty folks there, it sounds like, so I'm gonna go downstairs, give some things to Dustin, but kind of check the room out again, so. Time for interaction, cause we're all in this together per se, trying to keep things going, positive things, so. One project or one issue at a time.
All right. Okay. Brad, I guess you can continue?
Okay, well, a couple other items here before we finish. On Martin's behalf, we, we have a nineteen seventy-six maintainer that has served us well. And Martin would like to have permission to begin searching for a used replacement. This one's in still, it's in good enough shape that unlike this last one we sold, the motor, you know, went out of it. And it's still brought twenty or so thousand dollars. Would like to be able to have some, enough equity in this one, and it'll bring enough money and update to something similar to what our other, our three big ones are, so that they're all the same. Uh, the vendors getting in on trade and stuff, and we'd like to have permission to do a little research and see if we can come up with something to replace that one. It's thirty-six or so years old. We're guessing a replacement might be around a hundred thousand, and then if we can recoup twenty-five to thirty thousand.
No trade-in value of this, or they even do that anymore?
Well, it's like any trade-in, purple wave is treated so good, that where I think we'd get roughly twice what we would.
Oh, no trade-in, okay.
By selling it outright.
Yeah, it, it seems like it.
The, the, what we've gleaned of purple wave has just been tremendous, selling items like this.
Well, it's, biggest thing is if they're seventy-six, there's probably not that much value in it to dealership.
Well, true, and, and.
I mean, well, I mean, having a lot.
Yeah, and like I say, that last one that we sold was, wasn't quite this old, but the engine was bad. And we, we worked it to a point where the engine was bad even with an engine, a bad engine, it brought twenty plus thousand, so. It's one of those things, you know, if we're, if we're looking and a vendor happens to take one in on trade, we may need to put our name on it right away. But we do have it in the capital plan for next year. Uh, twenty fifteen, and so it, it's one of those things that's in there, if we could save some money and I just, Martin spares it. If we, if we hold on to this one much longer and lose the engine or something, then it's not, it's gonna lose any trade-in value or any retail value at all, so. And, uh, so without objection, we'd like, I'm not asking to buy one today, but we'd kind of like to do a little search and, and see what we can come up with.
Seems like a good idea.
Get it, come up with it. I'd like, come back with some, what are you, what are you looking for? I mean, you know.
Yeah, well, he told me, and I don't know all the model numbers.
Right, I know, yeah.
Something similar to our history that we've got, uh, that are, that are, what, six years old, I think.
I think so, yeah.
And, uh, they've only got five or six thousand hours on them, so they still got another fifteen years use in them, easy, so. You know, it, it would be nice to have four of them that are all the same, so no matter what you crawl into, you know how to operate, so you don't have to try to think about it, so.
I agree.
And also from the service standpoint, you know, parts and things, so. We have, I told you a week or so ago that we had a vacancy in the health department, and I had forgotten last week to ask for permission to fill that vacancy. I think I told you after the meeting that we were gonna start advertising, but I just wanted to formally make, you know, the request to fill that clerk vacancy in the health department, if we could do that.
Well, yeah, I move that we give you permission to fill that vacancy.
Second?
The move and second, Paul, there, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, just an update on the road crews. They, Monday, or Tuesday, they removed, uh, an old bridge at thirty-two fifteen Oak Road, uh, and they have since replaced it this week with three tubes. It was a candidate where we could put tubes instead of the bridge, and that'll be back open tomorrow. So that's actually good on two, two sides, number one, we can take that bridge off the bridge inspection list now. It's one less we have to worry about, and we just recently heard that those items are down in the price, and then also they were able to get it removed and tubes put back in there in a four day week, so that's really, really good on their part. And then, as you heard in the meeting, Martin also updated everybody, they've got one asphalt patch to be on Fair Road. They're gonna be doing some dirt patching next week, and now that the weather's cooling off, it's getting cold enough, that'll be the end of the, end of the asphalt work for the season, so. They'll be moving over and getting the machinery ready for snow and, and winter work, so. The last thing I had was, and we discussed at the department head meeting, I had given you a draft of a change to policies, uh, section six oh five. It has to do with employees carrying concealed firearms. And, uh, giving you that for the opportunity, or for the opportunity to review that, and next week we'll put it on the agenda. It's kind of straightforward, but it is aligned with the, our policy with the new statute for concealed carry of firearms in the state of Kansas, so. The bids that you had added to the agenda, I'll just kind of go over those right quick. You got a tally sheet there that I gave you. These are bids to replace a structure that, uh, was washed out during the heavy rains at, uh, on twenty-one fifty Avenue. It is in a location where when it gets snow and the snow and slick, the two occupants that live right there can't get up the hill to the east, cause it's a pretty sharp hill. They have to get out to the west, so it's kind of an important thing to them, which, in fact, is important to us to get it, get it replaced. We have, uh, I've listed the items that are needed there, and we solicited bids. I've also listed the bids as they came in, and, uh, on the first listing of deck sheeting and drive sheeting, the only company, the bid was wellboard sales. Uh, and then on the large scale materials, the H beams and I beams, we actually had two of the three. of the three vendors that bid. Salina Steel was unable to provide all the products, and they, they did not bid on the whole thing. And as you can see there, I mean, I like Husker Steel, making Nebraska's a little bit on that one, so when you get to that, I can certainly answer your questions on that, so. And I think that's all I had.
Doug, did you want an interview session today or not?
No, I don't think so.
You don't think we need to?
No, but I don't think we need to.
Okay. Anything else to report?
Have your tax, that'll come up pretty quick, five pieces of property, and, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, communications, there was a communication from the Kansas Builders Association, and like I say, they are wanting to eliminate the Kansas mortgage registration fee, and this is a letter that, I guess, they sent by email?
Yes, they sent it by email, yeah. Well, that came from Lauren Barton, that's, yeah, that, he provided that, is what they're wanting to-
As stated earlier, it'll be quite a financial burden on the counties if that is taken away, lost revenue. Is there other mail here? I did get a letter from the Chamber of Commerce thanking me for participating in the government forum that we had. We do have some invitations here from the, from Fort Riley. Bob, I don't quite understand this. Last week, from the Kansas Health and Environment, I think this is the same letter that I gave you last week.
Well, I put it out on, so they must have mailed you another one.
Well, doesn't that appear to be the same one that they-
Oh, well.
That they sent us last week?
I'll, I'll check.
Yeah. This is Barbie's, the tax, abstract list.
From Leah, from twenty-twelve, just showing that they've completed it.
That will take a while to look through. And the county NICO news letter. We don't have any resolutions today. We do have the two items, the steel bids for the structure at twenty-one fifty Avenue. That looks pretty much like the highlighted area for wellborne steel, for the sheeting and decking, and Husker Steel for the larger pilings and I beams. See any problem with that?
No, I saw, maybe we go with the county recommendation, the management's covering sales for the decking for nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three twelve, and the large steel material for Husker Steels for thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved in second. All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We did have the, the one item that we added to the agenda was, and the capital purchase that they were considering. I believe that purchase would be sixty-nine thousand, wasn't that the figure?
I think we motioned we purchase a vehicle for the investigation unit not to exceed sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, I'll second it.
I was just going to mention, too, I, I think it'd be good just for the county administrator to review and just keep on the, I think all the details are worked out on it, so.
You ready to move?
Yep.
All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Do you have a question about this request for payment? Are we going to put that off?
Well, that's why we-
Okay, okay.
Just put it on.
Okay.
Was there anything else?
I know nothing else.
Maybe we adjourn.
Okay. I'll second. All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.